At six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. So in Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made. If anyone else wants to record. Uh, make it aware to the chair. First up, um, special permit hearing. For forty limestone. Like to open that up now, um. Do we have? Any people from there? I think so. Um, Nate and guy, I think, oh, they're for Big Y.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right.
Should I move to, uh?
Yes, please.
Uh, let me find a date. So Chairman, I move that the. Um, special permit hearing for forty limestone road. Be postponed until six P M. At our meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, November eleventh. Well, then that isn't going to work, is it?
No.
When will we meet next? Going to have an interim meeting or just skip that?
We moved ours up to Tuesday.
I don't know. We have. We have to check.
And do we really want to do? Next week? No, I think.
No.
Either may maybe the eighteenth. And then we'll just do one meeting for November.
November eighteen.
I have a P C B meeting on the eighteenth. At six, we could drive at five thirty.
No, let's just do the twenty fifth then.
No, Mr. Chairman, I move that the, uh. Public hearing on, uh, forty limestone road be postponed until six P M. On November twenty fifth.
I'll second that.
Beg seconds. Any further discussion going around the room? Conrad? Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, I. Hey, we're continuing. The twenty fifth, um. Next up is public comment. Got anything for us, Kathy?
Just so many interesting things happening at Towneley, and I just want to. Just mention what has happened and what. So on October eighteenth, um, and at the. Want to say the building, but it's at the busy goal. There was a dedication to, um, establish a save the who's a panic day. And that was very well intended, and nice history of the river and the things that are happening. They had wonderful speakers. And as I said, many people attended. Then October nineteenth. Hallo's lead. What a fantastic. That. Town hall, not the town hall, but the park. Just filled with so many vendors and, um. It was just fabulous. So many different things that you could see connected with Halloween and being spooked and all that kind of stuff. Um, some people were disappointed because the ads said along Main Street. There was only like one. One store that had something, but maybe for next year, they have a whole year to plan. Maybe it can be all along Main Street similar to Founders Weekend. It was spectacular. Then on the twenty fourth at the high school was the trick or treat. The lead commission, um, joined that. Improved on people for the first time. And again, that was spectacular. Couldn't believe the wonderful costumes that these children had, or even the middle school kids. It was fantastic. Then, um, let's see here, we have trick or treat this week, October thirty first in Towneley. It's five to five to seven P M. Um, put your lights on if you want to participate. People shouldn't stop at homes that don't have. Then hopefully. The next thing is voting. November fifth. And please, here's, here's your clues. Where is it being held? The crossways of the high school.
Crossways.
Crossways. It's usually crossways and what time? Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't do my homework here, so I guess I'll give C minus today. But okay, I'll correct my errors. And then on, um. Where is the date here? On November. November ninth. The lead youth commission is going to begin its weekend Saturday events with Dodgeball. And we're going to be at Crossway Town Gym, Tower Gym, one thirty High Street. It is free and it's for ages six to eleven. And, um. The hours at five thirty P M. To seven P M. Uh, you can register going to the website. I'm afraid of the ball. No, in high school, remember Jim, we used to play volleyball. I got hit right in the. That wasn't for me. So, and then we used to have things.
I just imagine you smashing it.
No, but what we used to do after that incident, once I was a teacher at the high school, we used to have a fun day. Where the teachers would play against the high school basketball team. And I would go to the athletic director to get a hockey bat. Okay, so we wouldn't get hit in the face, but I had a good time because they had a little ladder. And anytime that there was a whistle bowl for a penalty or whatever, it was not a turn to shoot. You've got to have a sense of humor in this.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, no further public comment, um, approval of minutes.
So Chairman, I move approval of the minutes is submitted. October ninth.
Yeah, I'll second. Dave seconds. Any further discussion? Conrad?
Hi.
Peg? Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, I. Dan, just for the record. Okay. Pass. Um, next up, we have Jess, Jeff Cohen. Jeff, you're up. We have an.
Hi, everybody. Well, I, I, Buck, I think we did what you were looking for. We filed a formal. Request for the minor amendment to the forty R for the Eagle Mill to allow. Uh, the potential addition of, um. Twelve, no fifteen additional, uh, housing units. I'm not sure that we'll actually. Develop that many. Uh, but at least we would have the authorization to do so. We've had, just so you know, a couple of showings of the machine shop building where we're proposing. In the amendment before you to add nine residential units. Uh, to a. An entity that is local and very interested in a historic. Uh, reuse of that building for what amounts to cultural purposes. I don't know if we'll be able to do that. Uh, if they ultimately decide they're going to want it. If they do, uh, I'm fairly confident we'll make a deal with them. Um. But in the meantime, in case they don't, uh, our plan is for nine units in the machine shop. And instead of six townhouses, uh, we would put in twelve. Apartments because it's just too expensive to develop six townhouses. So that's where the additional fifteen units come from.
Okay, and then if this other project, uh, comes about, you'll come back to us again.
I'll come back to you. I don't know that we would need to get your approval, but we'd certainly come back and ask if we do. For basically a change in use from residential. Uh, as permitted under the forty R anyway, uh, to. What amounts to, I guess, a commercial use, although my guess is it's going to be nonprofit and cultural.
Which you're kind of. Right now, you're. That use would already be. Okay, in there.
Cause I think so. Yeah, I think it's fine. Um, I think it'd be much better for the. Project in the town to have that there than nine more apartments, but. We're going to, I'm optimistic about that, uh, and I don't say that lightly. So far, it's been a very positive conversation.
Um, going around the room, any questions? Um, Dan?
What, uh, what type of housing would these be?
Affordable. Well, I don't want to say that that quickly. I, I think they would be affordable. I mean, it's always possible that we could try and find a bank that would. Do a commercial, uh. Loan for market rate apartments, but, um. Because of the historic tax credits that are involved. My guess is it will be affordable and will be developed in the same package, if you will. Uh, in phase three, where there's a provision for a twenty-three unit. Uh, apartment building with a few retail spaces in it. So my guess is it gets developed as part of that because of the tax credits, um. There's a little over a million dollars in tax credits related to the machine shop. And that's not a lot of money in the tax credit world, so it's hard to find usually an investor. Uh, institutional investor for that amount of money. Therefore, John Rosinsky, who would likely be the developer of that. Site as well as the new building would lump the two together as one unit and have. The credits, uh, in that package. So that's why it's separate.
Yeah, I'm going around the room. Conrad?
And a couple of quick questions. The, um. Machine shop conversion to. Nine units potential apartments. Obviously, that's going to be the same footprint, so.
Same footprint, all approved by the historic. Uh, National Park Service and the state of Massachusetts.
And on the townhouses, that was six townhouses before?
Originally, there, there's a preliminary plan for six townhouses.
And now it will be six units of apartments in the same footprint?
That would be twelve units of apartments at the same footprint.
And where is that again? Where along the river?
It's on this, it's on the northwest corner of the site. That where that big holding tank is.
Yep, I do know where it is.
Right on the river.
So the twelve units of apartments would be in the same footprint as the six.
Yes.
No, go for the site. Go for the site disturbance from which you've already got approved, correct? Is that, is that fair?
That is correct. Oh, and I have one other thing I should advise you of. Um, we have a signed contract. As of last, the end of last week with Roger Schur. To buy. The Laurel Lake Dam. And everything else that he owns there, the twelve feet of water in the lake. And the development rights on the Eagle Mill site for hydroelectric power. Um. The hydroelectric power. Rights creates major league problems for us, which is why we bought it from him, or we're going, we close next year. But, um. It enables us basically to clean up the site, get rid of the equipment he has on the site. And, um, it also enables us to have a. Healthy conversation with the town about how to go forward with the dam. Management of the dam and access to the beach.
That'll be part of it. Your access to the beaches, uh, is a potential.
Well, yeah, you have to have access over the dam and, you know, there've been, I. I think it's fair to say there may have been more difficult conversations in the past. I think now there'll be more favorable conversations in the future.
You go past the dam. You have any control of that?
Yeah, we own the dam. You have to drive over it or walk over it to get to the beach.
But then there's the.
And there's Tom Schur's property on the other side of the dam. That's an issue. Yeah.
Which we still don't have.
No, but we're making a deal with Roger, so I, I think. We'll work something out with Tom. But right now, we do have a contract. To purchase Rogers properties.
That's all I got.
Okay, Peg?
Okay, um, I think when we did this A R A, it was eighty twenty. Do you remember this, Peter?
Peter, you're asking?
No, Peter, uh, what am I saying? Yeah, Jeff. I'm all mixed up. Yes, Jeff.
Eighty twenty for what?
Uh, all the apartments, eighty percent. Affordable. And then twenty percent would be. Um. Market rate.
No, I don't think so. I think what you've approved in the past and what phase one is, which is likely to be the same percentage. I mean, within a. Uh, not much difference, but it, um, it's seventy percent. Affordable. Twenty-five percent. Uh. Workforce housing. And five percent section eight. That's what it's always been. It's never changed.
Okay, so that would be in everything we do now. I mean, what you're asking for now.
It's the same as before, yes.
All right, so it'll be the same.
Yes.
Is that, I think, is important. Um. Because I remember. Mark Malloy, you might remember this too, Buck. Mark Malloy coming down and saying you can't have one unit that is all. Whatever.
He's going to keep, this will be.
So this will be the same thing. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Dave? Um, hopefully you can, uh, find a. Uh. Somebody to sponsor the, uh, the condos and, cause that's a real nice area. For the middle up where you're going to go from condos to apartments. Right now?
You mean the town, or you're free to the townhouse? Well, that did, I'd say to you that, that that decision is still a very, very open one. Uh, we haven't gotten to. Serious finalized construction pricing, but it looked like during COVID when we did it last. That those townhouses were going to cost us in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars each. They were a little over two thousand feet each. Four hundred dollars a foot is not a crazy number. We're actually spending more than that. Um, in, uh, phase one. Um, so I was just, I'm still concerned about building a townhouse. That costs me eight hundred thousand dollars that I've got to sell for. A million plus or minus. Uh, that worries me, um. But we haven't gotten there yet. At least this way we would have an option. To make a few more rental units, not many, um. And, and again, I'll come back when we know more. We just don't know enough yet.
Well, I agree that you have to keep your options open. Uh, you're at that point. Uh, I'm definitely glad that you're moving forward to the purchase of the water rights. Uh, the town tried to move forward and the, the citizens were not interested. So it gives us a. Good group to deal with. I mean, we've been doing a lot of dealing with these people throughout the years. Uh, it gives us a good group to deal with over the future of that dam. Uh, responsibility. Uh, future use. Uh, that's, that's all a good thing, so.
What we're, what we're planning. Is to create, uh, we're in the process of doing this, a five oh one C three. Laurel Lake Dam Inc. Uh, to own the property. And on the board of directors of it at the moment would be myself. Uh, my son-in-law, John De Craker, who, uh, works for Spiritus. Um. Demolition, uh, in the area. Uh, Shep Evans, who you may know is the. Conservation, uh, committee, um. Uh, staff member from Great Barrington. Chris Britton. And Mike Francis from D E W Construction. So it'd be five people. The town would be represented there. And, uh, I just see it as a very. Uh, cooperative. Uh, group. With the town to really, uh, enable whatever is best for the town. And that's all we care about. It's nothing, no advantage to us in owning this, except to get rid of those, uh, development rights at the Eagle Mill.
That's good. Very glad to hear this. That's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here. Yeah, I'll second Dave's comments about the Dan. That sounds very promising, Jeff. Um, Jeff, I have. A moderately serious concern about what, what it is. I have only one piece of paper in front of me, just the cover sheet. From, uh, from your application. There's no plan that I have. Is there, was there a plan submitted?
Well, you have the plans of the buildings. In your records. They're there. Um, all we're doing is asking you to increase the number.
You need to plant for the machine shop.
Right.
Yeah, but he's changing. From one use of the machine shop to another. And he's changing. You're changing. We, we haven't approved the machine shop. For residences, did we?
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, I thought we did.
I don't. There's always a change.
I'm going to come back.
The numbers are coming back.
It's the number, uh, the, you, you just, my understanding was you wanted a more formal application. The, the plans you've had, the plans are all approved by the National Park Service, um. If we. If we go back to a cultural use there. The current plan, which is approved, is probably. Much more appropriate than a change to housing units because it is in more open space. Uh, use of the space than the townhouses or than the apartments obviously would be. And this is what Chris Britton said was necessary, so. Uh, it was just to change it from a hundred and twenty-eight units, which is what's currently approved. To a hundred and forty-three.
The numbers.
Well, I'm just uncomfortable at, um, approving. Plan that's only been described verbally.
Well, I think, I think the request would be in more basic terms, go from a hundred and twenty-eight units to a hundred and forty-three.
Is that been filed? I mean, is that something we can act upon?
That's what Chris tells me.
It, it has been filed, but we haven't seen it here at the board.
No, I mean, do we, do we have?
Do we have to though?
I mean, I, I don't think that would be an amendment to, to the plan.
So.
And that's all there is in the plan is, is a number. It doesn't show. Apartments. drawn out, anything like that.
So usually, I mean, we, we made the process for site plan approval. A lot more.
Rigorous.
Uh, a few years ago, and we have a whole long list of things that we inherited from our ancestors about. All the stuff that should be in a site plan and we gave ourselves permission to. Could I, I just finished paying?
We'll get to you.
We gave, give ourselves routine permission to waive most of that, but, um. I, what I'm hearing, Jeff, is that. Um. Your plan for the, um, machine shop is one thing or the other. Your plan for the apartments. On, uh, on the condo site. Um, is for more apartments than there were going to be condos. And I haven't seen any floor plans for that, so I'm feeling like, um. I don't have enough really to, to. To write the letter of approval that we.
Well, I think it's not.
We will issue when there is an approval.
It's not.
Let me respectfully suggest that when. You considered and approved the forty R zone. All you really had was a number. We didn't have final drawings for. Each and every apartment on the site. And when you approved. The addition of six units. For townhouses, which you did approve. Uh, there were no formal final plans for. The townhouses.
Jeff, I may be mistaken. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I, I thought I saw. Plans from you at various times showing that there's going to be an upriver building with a certain number of apartments in it that's going to be constructed. From the ground up.
Yep.
And we saw a footprint of that shown on a, on a layout. Uh, we saw where the condos were going to go down river. Uh, where the, what the tank or whatever it was, was before. Uh, and, um. So I, I'm feeling like. I've seen some things, but mostly half the things that I saw were cha, have been changed. I just, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what we think we will write in the, in the approval letter. The approval letter will just say you've increased the number of units and you can build them wherever you want and. We don't care about location or traffic flow or landscaping or.
We're still within the same footprint that they proposed.
Okay.
Just basically the use of the machine shop has gone from commercial. Now it's going to be a, a build out of apartments. And the townhouses have gone from townhouses. Single townhouses to multi apartments.
And then what about the cultural use, Jeff? That if that happens? Then do we need to review it again, or do we?
I, I, I don't, I don't think you do because we would be developing less than. The number of total approved. Units on the site. Um, and we're certainly going to be within the, uh, four walls of the existing building. Um, and we're going to be all approved for historic purposes. So do I think you need to approve it? No. Uh, will we come back and say, hey, look what we're going to do because it's terrific for the town? Yes, we'll do that ahead of time. But I can't do it until I know I've got to deal with them.
All right, thank you. Would it help if we just had a narrative from Jeff? Well, just, I asked him for that last time and he did send it, but Buck didn't get it. Certainly had it sort of a loss.
It wasn't.
Townhouse or in the town hall and it didn't get circulated.
But it wasn't. Much of a narrative.
No.
No.
But it's what, it's what you asked for. I mean, all it. It, it isn't.
I mean, basically, so, so we're going from one twenty-eight to one forty-three?
Yes.
In the same footprint.
Yeah. And no changes to the cycle. So I, I think I would like to see at the very least, if not a. Customary layout. I mean, this is a site plan review.
No, it's an amendment.
It's an amendment.
Well, it's on site plan application.
Right, as, as an amendment. To the site plan.
If we're not going to have what I would hope for. Maybe I'm the only one that would hope for it, but not going to have that. Then I think we should at least have. Current statement of. How many? Units are being instructed in what places?
You have that. You have that.
We have for the, for the.
You have a specific number of. Units in each building to be built or existing.
Except for the amendment tonight.
Except for the amendment, you have forty-three units in a new building that's east of the. Eagle Mill. You have twenty-three new units in the building that's adjacent to the machine shop. And you have, uh. The fifty-six units that are currently under construction. And what we're talking about is in two locations within the existing. Uh, site. Plan and building of, uh, the addition of fifteen. Potential units, nine in the machine shop and six at the townhouse site. Not in increasing the coverage of the ground or changing any exterior walls or anything else.
Is there, is there a reason why we're looking, you're looking to change this now? And not potentially when you learn that. Uh, you, you know, the machine shop or the cultural center, or like, why wouldn't you do it closer to when you have an idea? Why would it be done?
It, it's a good question. Uh, it's more my. Style of doing things than it is, if you will, substance. Um, I don't want to wait around for this prospective. Uh, user of, uh, cultural space. Uh, they showed up about three weeks ago. Um. When you know who they are, you will understand how credible they are. Uh, but I'd like to have the approvals in place so for us to keep going. The, uh, I don't know whether it's technically the Department of Housing, but it's the. Agencies within the state that are responsible for financing. Uh, phase one at Eagle Mill have asked for, um. Uh, financing. a financing application for phase two. Phase two is the forty-three unit building north, or excuse me, east of the mill buildings. As part of that application, they certainly can or will consider what else is going on on the site. So I'd like to go with a clean application to them that basically says we have approval for this housing and that housing. And if, if we change it, we'll, we'll come back to it. I don't really see it as a it's, to me, it's a minor issue. But it enables us to speak clearly to the agencies we have to deal with and to others that this is what's approved on the site and this is our current plan of development.
Jeff, can I, can I reiterate to you what I tried to write down as you spoke? I want to see if I understand it fully. You said there'd be forty-three units and I think what, what I characterize as a new building upriver on the east end, is that right?
Correct.
And then twenty-three in a new building that would be in a later phase roadside, is that right?
The, the first forty-three unit building we refer to as phase two. And the twenty-three unit building, the machine shop and the townhouse site, we refer to as phase three.
So twenty-three is the machine shop and the townhouses?
Yes. It's twenty-three unit new building, the machine shop and the townhouses. And that's the way it's currently phased for us.
And then fifty-six. Okay, ahead.
Fifty-six is phase one, and that's under construction.
And that's at the old Mills building?
Correct.
And then you want to add nine to the
Machine shop.
The phase three machine shop.
Yes, and I want to add six to phase three townhouses. And what could change from all of that is that we get this offer that we make a deal to develop the machine shop. It would be our development team and what have you to do it. And we would move that literally to ASAP as opposed to waiting for phase three to do it.
Total is one hundred and thirty-seven? We agree on that?
Forty-three.
And add.
I think it's one hundred and forty-three.
Six, twelve, twenty-one, twenty-seven.
The townhouse is here.
Seven, eight, nine.
One twenty-two, one twenty-eight, one thirty-four, one forty-three.
Townhouse has become a twelve unit.
Right.
So that's a change of six, right?
Six town.
That's correct.
Yeah. But. In the count he's giving me, we had twenty-three in phase three when the machine shops and the townhouses. That was including the first six, right? That includes the six townhouses.
Let me, let me, let me go over it again very quickly for you. Phase one is fifty-six units.
Eagle Mill.
Eagle Mill and Union Mill combined. Phase two is forty-three units.
And that's the new upriver building?
Correct. Phase three is nine units in the machine shop. Twenty-three units in the new building. And twelve units at the townhouse site. And I think that adds up to one forty-three.
Yes, thank you.
Nick.
Great. Dave?
I think it's a good idea what Jeff's asking for. He's keeping his options open.
Yeah.
And got a couple different ways. So he doesn't get tied up in red tape of bureaucracy. And put a hold on whatever he wants to proceed with. As we certainly, I mean, we're glad to see it move ahead as far as it's gone. But let's keep it on the track. So that's all. That's why I, I, I think it's a good idea.
One more peg?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think it's a good idea to. Because before, we remember you were going to have a restaurant or something. I forget the name of the place that was going to be in.
Marketplace.
Marketplace.
Yes, yeah. And that's not going. So I mean, something cultural I feel would be absolutely wonderful if you could get it. It'd be exciting for the town.
They're supposed to give us an answer this week.
And when we're done, can I ask you one question? What are those white things on the Eagle Mill for? Are those, you know, the big, you know what I'm talking about? Those white things? No, it's not scaffolding. It's something.
On the roof?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's insulation, isn't it, Jeff?
Is that insulation?
Yes.
Is that insulation? People have asked that. And I said I'd ask it when you.
It's up on the roof.
Yes, it's up on.
It's insulation.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Think we're good?
I think there's ten concessions, yes.
Yeah.
Maybe what we ought to do is if we're going to prepare a decision, if you incorporate those numbers.
That's what I was going to say. An amendment to go from one twenty-eight to amend the site plan from one twenty-eight to one forty-three units.
Jeff, just to confirm what I think I heard about the percentages, it was seventy percent affordable, twenty-five workforce and five section eight?
Yes.
Thank you. So I guess a compromise would be to make a motion include all of that. We just covered in the motion and the, and the letter approving.
Yeah.
I just feel better about not having the thing sort of floating so that it's some undetermined combination of seven different meetings, you know, that we summarize where we stand tonight somehow. If he isn't doing it for us, we should do it ourselves.
I think the total number is where we're at.
Okay, so you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I move approval of Eagle Mill Redevelopment LLC's request for minor modification, is it minor?
Amendment.
Amendment of its S G O D application for the Eagle Mill site at seventy-three Center Street. And that it be approved with the following factual findings. The number, total number of housing units authorized is increased from one hundred and twenty-eight to one hundred and forty-three, comprising fifty-six units in the phase one reconstruction of the old mill. Forty-three units in a new building constructed upriver of that on the east end. And three parts in phase three. Nine units in the machine shop. Machine shop. I wrote M S. Nine units in the machine shop. Twenty-three units in the new building to be constructed alongside Route twenty. And between the highway and the machine shop. And twelve units in the former townhouse site now to be apartments. That total is one hundred and forty-three. Again, it was previously one hundred and twenty-eight. Of those one hundred and forty-three units, the town expects that seventy percent of those will be affordable housing units. Twenty-five percent will be workforce units and five percent will be section eight units.
That's fine if you add one word to that and say approximately. I just, I can't control the application process.
Approximately, yes.
If you want to say it's still going to be within the same footprint that was formally approved.
And within the same footprint as the original plan for which designs were submitted.
Okay.
Hot second, Jeff.
Peg seconds. Any further discussion? Going, oh, come on up.
The street. Is it Center Street or West Center Street?
It should be West Center.
It should be.
I think it should be. Oh, yes, it does. Thank you. It does say W Center Street on the application.
West Center Street.
Yeah.
My, my error. Seventy-three West Center Street.
I thought you were going to have something really good. Come on. Okay, going around the room. Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Okay, we're amended.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
We'll be, we'll be back soon with an application for the other side of West Center Street. Another fifty-seven units.
Gotcha. Yeah.
So thank you all.
Hey, just, just a note on that one.
Yeah.
The colors were interesting. I'm not sure how New England-y they were.
They're not finalized colors. They're just for demonstration that there will be colors. And the best comparable that I could suggest to you, if you're ever in Great Barrington and you go across the street from the Bistro Box, there's a development called Windrush that the community.
Yeah, I know that one.
Okay, so those are the similar colors to that, which are New England colors.
Thank you. Okay.
Guaranteed to be New England colors.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, next up, we have some gentlemen from Big Y group, and you saw the letter, what they're proposing to do. Would you guys like to present this? Nate?
You're muted, Nate. There you go. Poor guy.
Poor guy. Anyone there?
The other.
Yeah, your other one's.
Your mouse was moving, but we're not hearing anything, guy.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
There we go. Got you now.
Which microphone's working?
This one, that one.
All right, I'm gonna. Can I, can I hear on that one too, or which one?
Yeah.
All right.
Hello?
Can you hear yourself?
Yeah, I'm getting some feedback. All right, how about now? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I've got two machines here because I want to try to share a file if possible.
You're on that camera.
Hold on, let me fix this camera here. Hold on.
Which?
Do you want this camera on?
Let's get this one here. Yeah. Yeah, turn that camera on. All right, that's better. So I've got my laptop and my iPad here, so I apologize for the confusion. I was having trouble getting connected earlier, so I wanted a little redundancy of my systems, but for the record, my name is Guy Hesketh. I'm a licensed professional engineer with F A Hesketh and Associates. And I'm representing Big Y and this proposal that we have before you this evening. A couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by the folks at Big Y and, and they asked me if I could pursue the, looking at what the feasibility would be for them to cite a temporary building at their site adjacent to the retail portion of the facility that they have in Lee. And they're looking at citing a temporary building. And it would probably be used for, for less than a year, probably nine months. They have a tenant in the fitness center now whose lease expires. I believe it's in, in the summer of twenty twenty-five. And they have a Verizon as a possible tenant that would like to occupy that space. But they'd like to get in sooner rather than later, if it's possible to just get into a temporary building. And then when the fitness center moves out, they're going to remodel that space. That'll take a couple of months to re-tenant that. And then Verizon would move into that space. And then they would no longer occupy the temporary building. So I took a quick gander at your zoning bylaws. And I've got some communication started with the planner or the interim planner will be there on Wednesday. I got an email from him today saying we can discuss it in more detail, but I wanted to get it before the board to kind of let you know what Big Y's thoughts were. I don't know if it's something that would be something that's permissible under your zoning bylaws, or if we, we need to have some kind of a special exception, a special permit for this. So I wanted to just bring it up to the board and present it and get some feedback, see what your thoughts are on that. And then continue the dialogue with the planner on Wednesday of this week. So I did send a PDF file. Did you guys get a copy of that at all?
Aerial, aerial photos?
Yeah, it's an aerial photo that shows the, yeah, it shows the overall plaza and then the general area where we're looking to locate it. And then it has a closer up Google photograph of the area that we're, we're looking at. We're thinking probably something like a double-wide temporary construction trailer, something that's, you know, newer and that, that has some aesthetics to it. There's a, there's a grade difference between the sidewalk that's underneath the canopy that runs the facade of the retail spaces and the Big Y. And there's about a two and a half or three foot grade difference. I, I attached them to that plan as a photo on the lower right hand that kind of shows the grade, grade difference. On that sort of southwestern side of the building, there is about a nine-foot landscape strip there that has some shrubs in it. What we would anticipate is, is locating the building, bridging that, that landscape feature. And then we would, we would tie that into the same elevation as the sidewalk and the canopy. We'd have to, we'd have to cut into the, the rail that's there. And then we would provide some kind of a walkway that's elevated so that ADA accessibility would be available from the nearest ADA parking spaces. Somebody could take a wheelchair, roll across the sidewalk, and then we would have some kind of a a walkway slash ramp system that would get to the front door of the building. Probably a set of steps too for, for, for people that were ambulatory so they could have access in addition to that. And then the, the building size that we're looking at is probably on the order six hundred square feet, but you know, we don't have any definitive size yet until we can find out what's, what's readily commercially available. But my anticipation, it would probably be something that's double-wide. Maybe triple-wide possibly. That would be able to be constructed on-site and then it would be self-contained. We'd have to have, I think for building code, we would need some kind of a bathroom facility. So we would have you know, running water there and there would be a, a, a tank for storage that would be used. You know, only by the employees there for the, for the restroom. And I guess in the case of somebody that needed an emergency, they'd be accessible to them. That would be monitored and emptied, you know, as needed, probably on a weekly basis. And then that temporary use, once, you know, we'd have to meet all the building code requirements, obviously, for hurricane loading and whatever building code requirements there were. And then upon completion of the, the tenant retrofit, that building would be vacated and then the tenant would move into the, the retail space. So I just kind of wanted to get it out there to, to let you know this is something they're thinking about, that they'd like to act on it fairly quickly because they have a, the tenant that's Verizon, put a phone store in there. And if they can get something temporarily, they'd do that until the tenant space is done. And again, I think that lease will, will end, I think it's in July of twenty twenty-five. So it'd be probably, probably two months or so after that tenant space is vacated that they would do their build out and then there would be a full occupation at that time. So anyway, that's it in a nutshell. I just wanted to to lay the cards on the table, see what your thoughts are. And again, like I said, I'll have a, a more detailed discussion with the interim planner, but if this is something that you think is feasible, or if you don't think it's possible, I just want to give some feedback back to my folks at Big Y. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Sure. You're within the, in the CBC zone. So I believe, I mean, it's definitely a site plan approval is what you would need. I don't think if Big Y had a special, I don't think there's.
No more questions.
If, we'd have to look into if there's a special permit for Big Y property, then we'd have to, you know, amend that. There would be an amendment to that. All this would be an amendment to the site plan or a special permit. And I think a big question, after this tenant moves into the main building, would this space go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it would not be permanent. It's just something that they would like to do in, in the interim. Now, Big Y does lease the plaza, so they're discussing this with the owner. So that, that dialogue is happening at the same time. They're negotiating with Verizon as a tenant of that space. So this just came up literally a week, a week and a half ago. And they asked me to, to get involved and, and start the ball rolling on this. So that, that's why I put the plan together and sent it to you. And your, and your staff was kind enough to get me on the agenda for this evening. So I appreciate that. Such short notice.
I guess the big thing, does anyone see any reservations about it?
I just have a couple of questions. I just have a couple of questions. It is a CBC zone.
It is.
Uh, it's a Verizon store, that's retail, retail's allowed by, right? Subject to site plan review.
Correct.
Um, I was wondering if Big Y developed that as part of a special permit? If it was, then that would have to be an amendment to that special permit, because you are already adding square footage to it.
Yeah.
I guess that's, that's a question we have to find out here, if it's already under a special permit.
Big Y would know. They would, if they went through a special permit, they would know, right?
Yeah, we could look in our files also.
Right, either of us, yeah.
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 Yeah. And, and, and again, I think, um, originally there was some approvals on this. I got involved. Our office actually did the traffic signal, um, for this project when the, uh, the facility was first constructed. A different consultant actually did the site plan, and I'm not sure if any additional amendments to the site plan were done subsequent to that original approval, but again, that's something that I can clarify with staff on Wednesday, when we review the record. Um, so yeah, we can get to the bottom of all that, no problem.
They were, as, as the stores went in, each, each one of them had an amendment to the site plan, as well as when the Tesla chargers went in, that was a, an amendment. So.
Also, is, uh, I'm not sure, but there's a river nearby, is this in the floodplain?
Um.
Up for the engineer.
It is, it is adjacent to the river, I'd have to check on that specifically. Um, but I know that the, uh, Conservation Commission, I've done some compliance work subsequent to it being constructed, where we do a reporting, uh, annual inspection and reporting to the Conservation Commission. That's mostly related to water quality, um, review, uh, but I can, I can verify what that, uh, the flood elevation is. But again, our proposal would be certainly match the finished grade of the existing, um, facility, and we could take a look at that if there's, if it, if it is on some type of, um, support or something, there'd be, there'd be minimal volumetric capacity that would be lost due to that, but. Yeah, we, those are things that we certainly would review. Uh, we plan on looking at it in much more detail, we just wanted to present it preliminarily and see what your thoughts were, and then, you know, if, if it's worth pursuing, they're gonna go ahead full speed.
Basically, if it was a full, full, uh, foundation underneath the structure, if that affected extensive storage issues, that's, that's just something you'd have to look at and see if that would, uh, if it would apply.
That's correct.
It's like the setbacks are, are really an issue. Six hundred square foot is very nominal. Um. Um, so access to this structure is going to be by an elevated walkway that's attached to the existing sidewalks.
That's correct, and we'd probably have a stairway also that would be directly, um, you know, a few steps that would go directly down to the parking lot in front of it. But ADA access would be through the existing, um, sidewalk network, because it's at, it's at the right elevation, and it's, it's more economical to cut the rail, build a new, uh, a plankway or something over to the store, then we could retro-fix that when we're all done, so it, it lends itself nicely to that with that grade differential.
It also might need a secondary means of egress off the back, perhaps.
Yeah, and that would be, that would be a building code issue if there were, then, you know, there'd either be an area of refuge if somebody were in a wheelchair and/or, um, stairwell access.
If you're dealing with a tight tank, I mean, it's a health department issue, the building department has to deal with any structural issues.
Yeah.
This just seems like it's a simple site plan amendment. Uh, I don't see to be an issue.
I think that's what he's looking for. It, it's just the, the, uh, the tone of the board, I think is what we're, he's looking for tonight.
That, that, yeah, that is correct, that'd be helpful to see, you know, what, you know, see what your, your general feeling for this is, if it's something that looks like it'd be permissible, and it's something that you're not adamantly against, or.
To me, it sounds like.
Temporary.
Yeah, it's temporary, it's not gonna be that.
Probably a little over a year, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Temporary. Hey, anything?
No, I think like, once we get the records, we'll know more.
Dave, anything for you?
Uh, no further additions to the original building, just remodeling of the, uh, fitness center.
That would be correct, yes, yep.
Uh, you, I thought you were with a, uh, sanitary provisions, uh, you were, you were talking about this kind of, you just brought up a tight tank.
Uh, yeah. That's typically how I've seen them done. You can buy these pre-pa- packages, and they're contained, so they'll have, you know, a tight tank and, uh, alarm system on there, and then you set up a schedule depending on how many gallons per day you use, and a septic install, a septic hauler would come out and take care of that. Um, so again, that's something we'd have to work out with the Health Department and the Building Department to make sure that, you know, we comply with the, you know, Massachusetts general statutes. And, uh.
But, uh, not knowing where the sewer line is on the, on the original project, uh, a chance of pumping. Uh, you know, it doesn't have to be a full excavation ditch, but in the ground. Uh, and pump, uh, everything up to the sewer line. I don't know where the sewer line is, so.
Yeah, we, and again, you know, we, I've got plans on that, I'd have to, I'd have to pursue that and take a look and get, get into the nuts and bolts of it. Um, but I haven't done that yet. Again, this has just popped its head up a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, and I just had enough time to put a concept plan together, but yeah, we're gonna thoroughly vet all of that stuff, and, uh, and if it, if it's feasible to do that, we could certainly tie into the gravity sewer there.
You just approved one with no sanitary facilities across the street.
Oh, yeah.
Come on.
Yeah, so, you know, we'd also have to, you know, there's, you know, besides this, this board, we'd also obviously have, have to, if, if necessary, go before Conservation Commission, and of course, the Building Department.
Yeah, guys.
So, there's a whole gamut of, um, a whole gamut of, um, homework that we've got to, homework assignments we've got to complete, but again, I think this is the first step, is to come before the planning board and get your, get your feedback and your thoughts, and then, uh, and then we'll start, you know, meet with staff, or we'll have a conversation with staff at least on Wednesday. And then, um, and we'll see what other requirements we need from approvals from, uh, from the town and the commissions and the department.
I think, I think as long as this building's gonna quickly disappear, uh, once the re- re- rehab of the existing building is done, we'll weigh heavily on the decision. I mean, I, I can only speak for myself, but, uh, I, you know, I would like to see us move ahead with, you know, this is, Verizon's a good, a good, uh, partner.
Yeah, everybody's got, yeah, everybody's got a cell phone nowadays, and you can't live without them, so. Yeah.
Really don't.
Even though I can't, I don't know how to use mine, and my kids are always showing me, at least I've got one.
That could be a frequent flyer, I want to know when they're opening.
Peter, you got anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um. I guess it's my theme tonight, Guy, I don't know if you were listening earlier, I was talking to the previous applicant about filing what he's gonna file. I would ask you to include in, if, if you file a site plan, at minimum, include a, a layout of the plot with the, with the building boundary shown. That would be an obvious thing you would probably do anyway.
Absolutely.
Maybe a front elevation showing, you know, where the doors and glass and signs are. Would that be something you would normally do?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we'll give you a, you know, we'll meet whatever your site plan requirements are, we got, we can get electronic copies of the current site plan, and we'll show things scale and dimensionally accurate. And we'll get you a, you know, floor plan and, and elevations of the building, absolutely.
Great. And then, uh, as to scheduling, I'm hoping that you don't run into the special permit problem, which would complicate things a little bit. This board is scheduled usually to meet on the second and fourth Mondays, and the second Monday of November is Veterans Day, and we just discussed earlier tonight that we will not be meeting then, and we'll meet next at the end of November, so if there's a special permit adjustment required, I recommend you get it right on it right away, because they're, Massachusetts, as you probably know, has a newspaper notice requirement for a special permit. So you, you wouldn't want to miss the note, was it November twenty-eighth?
One, yeah.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, November twenty-fifth would be your, your, uh, target date for getting all of it, if we're done in time, if, if that's required. With the site plan, there's no newspaper advertising required. And I just want to say, I think, uh, Big Y is a good neighbor and a contributor to the economy of Lee, and I think we should try to help them out if we can. I don't see any objection to this.
Oh, I appreciate that, yeah, that, that'll, that'll, they'll be pleased to hear that, and I'm sure they'll give me my marching orders tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty safe to say to, um, one of the conditions that'll probably be in it is that it's removed after the tenant moves, so just break it back to your client, um, so they're aware, so they're not.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want it to be a consistent transient, uh, location, you know what I mean?
No, I'm, I'm with you, yeah. We'll, we'll, in our narrative we have for the application, we'll clearly stipulate a timeline for its use, and yeah, they have no objection.
I don't want any surprises for you.
One final question, Mr. Chairman, are you making pancakes?
The, the bowl in front of you.
What's the bowl?
No, you know? No, I, uh, I went, um, I'm a fisherman, I went fishing, and I caught blackfish, and I made some bisque tonight for dinner, so.
Good for you.
It's whole now.
It's whole.
Yeah, it's a bowl of, uh, let's see.
This side, yeah, there you are, there you are.
Blackfish bisque, it's got, um, bell peppers in it, basil pesto, half and half. It's really good.
Wonderful. All right.
I was eating this, I was eating this while I was trying to watch your other, uh, meetings, but I had technical difficulties, and I didn't get a chance to listen, so.
Enjoy your dinner.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Evening.
Bye now.
See you. Uh, okay, moving on, um, residential zoning discussion continued.
Okay, so last meeting, we had, um, a fairly long discussion about all the different things that we might do. Um, and I spent, I would say, I guess, the better part of a day, uh, trying to see how all or any of that would fit in, um, to the existing bylaw, and I sent my email to the board members.
You did.
Um, a draft, which we do not have before us tonight.
We do not.
Um, and so we can't really.
Some of us do.
You do?
He printed it out.
Good, good. Um. Hmm, I didn't, I didn't.
I know Dan had some concerns, but yours were more from your, from your insurance world.
Oh, yeah.
And it was, it just goes back to the four to eight, and, and, uh, I wasn't doing a, uh, insurance quiz or anything, it's just if you change the number of residentials from four to eight, it becomes a different insurance product. It's a commercial product and not residential, so you're calling something residential, but you may actually have to insure it, uh, as a.
I don't think that'd be, uh, our issue, would you?
Wow.
Right, that's why we're not our. Peter, Peter actually asked some questions, and, you know, honestly, that's a, that's a town decision.
I figured if, if, uh, somebody wants to build an eight-unit apartment house, they're gonna have a lot of things, they're gonna have to look up the costs of, you know, plumbing and carpentry and roofing and insurance. And, uh, is it more expensive generally, the, the commercial product, is that more costly?
Well, that's, that's kind of what was driven by, by the answer that was given by AI. The answer that I put in there was, was the answer I asked.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what the AI is, I, I didn't.
Artificial intelligence.
Oh.
So I didn't want you to think it was something from me, as the insurance sales guy, I was, I was saying, I asked AI what would happen, and it spit out those, those.
Oh, okay. But I ju- I just don't see that as a reason to not go forward on it, I feel like.
I've had multiple, I've had buildings, it's, it's possible doing business, it's, it's baked in here, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah.
It's very expensive.
Everything goes in your P and L, so it's. It's, it's a given, it's gonna.
So, I, I, uh, I didn't get from Gordon until after I emailed this to you, his corrections for the, uh, table one and table two. So, I didn't, nothing that he sent me has been incorporated into it, but, um, what I chose to do, what, in the draft, was to move table one and table two into the text of the bylaw. I don't know if you've read what I sent, but, um, I, you know, I just, my experience and has led me to conclude that there was some stuff in those tables that we never really implemented. There were footnotes, tables that I didn't even know were there until Gordon.
They were crazy.
And they were kind of in conflict with other things that were, you know, fifty pages earlier. So I tried to, uh, put everything more or less in the same place. I still think there's a bit of sort of wandering around in the forest, even so, but, um, I hope that it's, I think I got it closer, good, thanks, God, I was trying to do. So, um, you want to go over the items one by one as I describe them in my email? And see if there's any objection or any corrections, or should we just postpone it for a month and come back and spend an hour on it wi- wi- in detail?
I actually think it'd be better if we had some paper copies in front of us.
Yeah.
I do, yeah.
I think it's, we're ill-prepared.
Okay.
Say monos.
Well.
Hey, I got it.
You got it.
I got all my notes here, I'm ready to go tonight.
How come, huh? How come you got it? We didn't.
I don't have a life.
Cause he. His, his.
Well, maybe.
His.
I think there was one thing I put in there that we didn't talk about last time. And it'll make it your quiz to try and figure out what it is. I can't remember it at the moment.
You can't remember it either.
You know what it is?
Okay.
I remember catching it. It's in here somewhere. Anyway, so read with interest and look for, you know, it's sort of like, find the little doggy in the picture, you know?
Where's Waldo?
Where's Waldo?
Yeah, you gotta find Waldo.
Find the one that you didn't talk about before, that you don't, aren't sure that Peter Blum had a good idea or not, yeah.
So the question here is, it's November one. We need to go to a warrant in May. So we, we have time to.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I mean, we should probably, probably around January, schedule a, a, uh, public hearing, somewhere in there.
So that gives us, that gives us really only December to really.
Couple more meetings.
Couple more meetings, yeah, I can still do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this very pot, this might make some people's heads explode, so.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know, I.
The, the four to eight is going to, for sure.
I think that, I'm trying to think how I would present this at town meeting, and I think I would begin by saying, well, you know, we have a fifty-year-old bylaw that was designed around the idea of keeping uses separated as much as possible, even consistent uses that don't conflict, they were still on pretty large lots. And, uh, and that was pretty much the sentiment in the nineteen seventies, when, you know, everybody was getting cars and we wondered, we're gonna, planning to drive everywhere, but we're finding that, um, there's some downsides to that, and one of them is that we, it's become very expensive to have housing, a lot more than it was in the nineteen seventies. So, how can we maintain the character of the town and also increase the density of housing and make housing more affordable, especially to young families? So, um, what we have here is a series of proposals that would possibly make it more economical to construct multifamily housing in town. All right, Peg, say it.
I want to read it, and we're here, um, and go forward. Um.
Are you generally in favor of this, Peg, this, this whole project, or do you have reservations?
I think it is a good idea if we can. Going from four to eight, so.
Might be six, maybe, or, you know, I picked, I picked eight because I, of the church. The guy wanted, he wanted, I think, more than six originally. I think he want, did he, he wanted like.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Number, yeah.
So we could make it a different number, I don't think, and there's a right, right answer to this, it's just a matter of judgment, but
So.
I, I wanted to pick a number that would admit, would have solved that problem if it had happened retroactively.
Great, you did all that, just, Peter.
It's truly.
Thank you.
I mean, from what I'm seeing of the, these, we, we do a lot of housing at work, and, um, the, the townhouse design, your, the optimum number usually ends up being right around six, six to twelve. It's, so.
On a site or in a building?
In a per, per unit, yeah.
Per unit.
So, per, per building, per building.
Yeah, no, this is per site.
Right, right, but this would be in, in a building, in a townhouse building, they'll put six, six to ten, usually, um, units in there.
Right, and that's what Jeff's coming back with.
That's what he's.
He's coming back with, I think, six and some of those.
And across, across the street, that's what all those are set up.
That's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Tony was waiting for four years, right? Came when, doesn't sound it up, no, no, it was a short four years, and it was.
It was.
Okay, so let's talk about the eight, let me get to it next time.
And the other thing that I, in the beginning, it says here, I can't remember now, residential, and the steer.
Well, I, I eliminated the RA, rezoned it as R thirty.
Okay.
So that takes it down from forty thousand square feet to thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And, and.
And how many units could you have on that? On that one, that could be.
Well, the RA is a. The RA is a relatively small part of town as a fall.
Yes.
Um, and so the answer to your question requires knowledge of how many lots and there are and how big they are, right, so if somebody has a forty thousand square foot lot, they're gonna be able to have still one lot at thirty thousand square feet, they can't have two at forty thousand square feet, right, you need sixty to have two lots, right, so it doesn't help that person.
And, and have the proper frontage also.
You have to have the frontage too, that's a separate issue, but somebody has a, in the RA zone today has a, say, a sixty five thousand square foot lot, they can only have one house on it. Right, but if it's rezoned to thirty thousand square feet, then they could have two lots and two houses. So that would be one extra house.
If they have the road front.
If they have the road frontage and they can do the side yard and setbacks and all that stuff too, yeah. Uh, now, um, the other thing I did, I guess, is um some of the multifamily table seemed to me to be sort of unreasonably peneurious, uh, you know, just harsh. And uh so I think I changed some of the numbers pretty substantially about lot coverage, for example.
That's what we agreed, we said that they should all just go back to whatever a single family is.
Yeah, so when you get to that, double check to see if you agree, I, I don't remember exactly how I handled it, I, some of the stuff that's in the table two now, it was pretty much uniform all the way down the page, so I just moved it into a paragraph later and took the, took the column out to simplify it.
Okay, yeah.
Is that, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, you're right, uh, what I'm concerned about is the uh price of a lot across the street here. Like the uh, that's a DC BC zone, we're showing like twenty five units per acre. Across the street, they were planning, at least they were planning, sixty four units in the back and twenty units in the front.
We put them into the, the special permit for uh smart growth. Changes there.
Uh, I, we, we passed the bylaw change a year after smart growth came in and that bylaw change said that there's certain things that can be done, there's certain raised limits in the smart growth district that can apply.
Yeah.
By special permit in the DC BC zone.
Where was that said?
Where is that said?
Yeah, I don't know where.
I don't remember.
You see it?
Oh, it was, it was argued over, Peg.
Well, I thought it was just you were extending the zone, I don't recall.
The height was the big thing.
Height was the, yes, I remember. Um, anyways.
They wanted, they wanted more height.
We did, the height and their proposal did work in our zoning somehow. I don't, I can't recall how it did, but it did.
Well, you would.
Whether, whether we had extended the smart growth or they fall under the A-Rod, they might fall under A-Rod.
I don't think so.
I thought you didn't.
I don't think so.
They never went that far.
Well, they're.
Yep.
I think, I don't think it was, it wasn't smart growth and it wasn't A-Rod, I think it was just a special permit, it's a special rule that you pass by.
Ruling that you have, we have, or you, we.
So we could be, we could be hurting that if we, yeah.
And now it's two years since they.
They're gonna be refiling.
Oh, you weren't here, they talked to me, I, I put it in the minutes, I don't know if you saw, yeah, but they called me because I had worked with them last time and they said, we're coming around again, the, the case is settled and we think we want to apply again for the same thing.
Well, they'd have to start all over again from scratch though, because it's been two years since they've been.
I think that's right.
And also, um, last time it was representative vote.
They won't need that, 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 that was a zoning change that, that happened.
Well.
At the town meeting, it wasn't to, it was to permit what their plan was, yes. But they wouldn't have to go to a town meeting again.
I don't know.
We, we, we went to town meeting because they wanted to build a building that was too tall.
I know, I remember quite well.
And we said, we'll change the bylaws so that DC BC, that you can go to as high as you can go in the S G O D, especially the S G O D district, now in the S G O D district, it's fifty feet. Or fifty five.
Well, we should look at the, we should look at that to make sure when they come back.
Well, I don't want to do any inadvertent damage to that project, that's kinda why, yeah, yeah, so.
Applying by this, uh, when we. There's another vehicle.
Maybe by the time we get to this in a month, we'll have that application and we can invite them in to talk it over about what changes they might need or whether we're doing any inadvertent damage to their project by these changes.
Because it may be in the flood, uh, what is it, the flood zone?
Oh, they've got flood problems, they're right against the river, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, they already have that.
They've got to deal with all of that in there.
They have to deal.
Parking garage.
They had a parking garage there, there was a, it was raining.
But I think, I think the parking garage was their way of dealing with their flood plain, because it didn't increase the flood levels, because it's just air.
So, well, boy.
The river can flow through and kill all the cars, but.
Whatever, whatever.
All the time.
Whatever, I don't know, we'll see.
Cool, set up regulations for common driveway.
Uh, that was done years ago.
I know, but why I'm asking, my, even my own property. I have a couple lots that I can't do anything with, they have road frontage, they have everything but access because it's wetlands to get to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the common driveway says you can have two, two houses.
Houses, and I have that.
And I've already got a uh uh variance for a third.
Mm-hmm.
But there's still another lot that I can't do anything with, so is it this part?
Wow.
Set up common driveways?
I don't think about it, how'd you get to two to three? Is it, how'd you get there from two to three?
I, I went to zoning board of appeals.
Will be like.
Cause we, we allow two.
By right.
By right.
As long as you have the frontage.
Yep.
So I guess that to see if you get a fourth.
What would you think?
I don't, I mean, they, they said this is it.
No.
So, I mean, who's, who's, who set it up?
I think it's in the bylaw.
Common driveway.
It's in the, in the.
It's in our hand bylaws.
Chuckie Driscoll?
Well, is it, is it Dick Ford?
Oh, yeah.
The district, oh, yes.
It's in ours, it's in our bylaws.
So, I mean, is there other situations, other, mine can't be the only one.
No, um, the other one comes to, well, you have uh Timmy Whalen on Poppy Street, Mike Dooley, those two houses up in the field by Maple, those are both common.
And who's at Tonic Street here are a couple.
But those are two lots that have one drive.
One driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is a lot.
There's an opportunity from them by East Street. Get uh a third lot on one driveway.
I mean, the space is there for sure.
They have land to do that, do one of those.
If they wanted to, yeah, I mean, but then it would be the same thing, you'd have to do the.
Well, I just don't want to end up with, like you say, I'll just put myself in the driving net seat again, uh, have to do a subdivision.
Subdivision, I could do any. You may have the frontage again, but if you can't, well, have access. It almost sounds like if you looked at weather crossing.
I, I looked at everything when I went to put a driveway up to my house.
Yeah.
Uh, DEP's flatly denied unless I built a subdivision road for one house.
Uh, they would go with weather replication?
Oh, no.
No.
Um.
They said you have a driveway, Sheriff, that was their final that's it, conversation.
But if you think the Z P A is not gonna be a third unit, the other avenue, the only other avenue you have is to petition the town meeting to allow a third.
He's got a third.
Or a fourth. I mean, you, you have to change the, you got a legislature, the, the zone. The code.
Well, as they say, we're just looking at avenues to open up building lots. Uh, not that I ever want to have another house next to me, uh, but somebody down the road might and it's a good location, I mean, it's high and dry out back, the front of it's wet. Uh, so you can't put a driveway through, you can use the existing that was built on my original property that has no wetlands.
Yeah.
So I just didn't know if there was a way, uh, they told me because they only, they only let three, uh, three houses up there uh to let traffic pass, well, you know yourself, how much traffic's gonna pass with four or five houses, not much.
It seems like the only thing out is either a bylaw change or you put in a town approved subdivision road, it can be without, that's very expensive to me, as you know.
That's right.
So it's, I don't know if there's any other options.
Where's the, where's the driveway thing, is it part of the zoning or is it part of this project, maybe, or we could write it into this?
Well, that's why I brought it up now, yeah.
Or is there a separate bylaw?
Would that? I mean, when you get into four houses, then you're kinda into a subdivision, I mean, I'm not even a big fan of the single house subdivisions. Cause they never they don't build them too. Usually the road isn't up to what it should be.
Tricky.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Very tricky.
Do you have what, one driveway, two driveways?
Right now, I have one.
Two?
There's, I can, I have two houses on it and a possibility of the third.
Not a possibility, you have it.
Yeah, well, I have it.
You have it.
You have it.
Still another lot.
Build a nice townhouse, townhouse with eight units. He's using that, what he's saying is using it as an example, I mean, may, maybe there should be a, a way that we can look into this.
The D E P, I don't know.
No, it's not, it was not D E P, it's just, do we wanna the, the two house common drive, do we wanna extend that also, to open up more land?
Is that in our bylaw, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, two houses for a common drive.
Two.
You want me to write something in, or you wanna think about it?
Put it down for discussion, I think.
I think we're at discussion anyhow.
Let's, let's really think about the panel, that's, that could be tough.
Well, you're gonna have to think about what the, the state's doing too with the additional
Right.
The nine hundred square foot dwelling units, some of these driveways now may have another residence.
So you're gonna have.
Well, you have a maximum length of the driveway that's included in the setting out. It can only be, I don't, it's well, hundred feet, nine hundred feet.
Not only two people about who's gonna maintain the, then you're gonna be into four.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you, you sorta need a subdivision owner at some point.
If you. Included would be a home, uh, what you call a home.
Homeowners Association, yeah, yeah. It sounds like a subdivision to me, but let's talk about it more, yeah.
Talk about that.
Oh.
All right, moving on, um, I did the, a little bit of a I liked it, letter, and then, then um Conrad marked it up very well, I think.
I did read that. That was home, I have that at home, yeah.
It was later than that.
Very good.
Okay.
Later entry.
About both of them.
And he formatted it well for me, so.
Can I ask a question, maybe Conrad found the same things, I had two areas I wanted to make a suggestion on. In the first paragraph, you said, the roads have been vital part of our community including ease of tourists to visit our area, I thought maybe staying, instead of including ease of tourists, it might say something like including uh making it easier for tourists to visit our area, so it feels like there's a verb missing there.
Yeah, I said, including ease of welcoming.
Well.
Yes.
The roads have been.
Nope.
Um.
Roads in and out of Lee have been a vital part of our economic growth. Including ease.
Well, see, I, I mean.
Yeah.
Economic growth does not include ease, right? We need another verb, another clause there, including by making it easier. For tourists. Something like that. I'm not sure, there's only one way to do it, but I think it needs a verb there. And then, oh, you broke it up, you broke up the second paragraph, good. Um the second thing I had was um we all realize that this property is mass dot, we all realize that this is mass dot property and your discretion. Um and I think you should say it is obviously in your discretion.
In the Commonwealth's discretion?
Yeah, in the Commonwealth's discretion. So uh again, a verb was needed, I think, there, I'll just hand this back to somebody who wanna, you wanna take that.
You're really a lover, right?
You got the markups, go, I, you can go ahead with it.
Somebody, somebody needs to prepare it for the town hall to print it and get luck to sign it, so um.
So that, that was it?
That was it, that was it, yeah.
Okay, let's rework that then, um, you got it on your computer already, so. And then um I'll sign it, but it'll also be coming from the members of this planning board, right?
Yes, I make a motion that the uh planning board endorse the draft letter as amended and is prepared by the chairman.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, just that one paragraph, how are we fixing to eat?
Right here, I think.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He should have been a doctor, Conrad.
By making it, is it easier?
Yeah, or, or by facilitating or something, by facilitating visits or making it easier to visit or.
Ease of access.
So that we aren't implying that ease of access is part of development.
Okay, so you want me, want me clean this up and send you?
A little bit, yes, please.
And I'll send you a word file?
Yep, that's good, with the header and everything.
Yeah, I, I mean, does the town have a uh?
I think we can use that.
I, I signed a letter to um, to tonight, I signed a letter.
Hold on, we're still have a motion and a second on the floor that we gotta get through, okay. Um, okay, so where else, Conrad, good with it?
I'm good with it, yeah.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Peg, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, I bucked on him an aye, okay, next up?
Uh, just, I, I, I happen to have a letter here that I, I signed tonight that, that town, that Chris prepared, you can still look at the header.
Uh, has everybody noticed the new streetlights on Main Street? They're much brighter than the old ones. Uh, helps with the crosswalks.
Yes.
They tell me there's speakers, so I guess we could have live music. They are smart.
They're Wi-Fi enabled, yeah.
Yeah, so uh uh it looks like good deal.
Right, right, cheaper too.
It's LED lights probably.
All right, folks, I do have some correspondence here that I think I have to go over, um, if you think we can. Really not in our agenda, but it should be. Um, we have public hearing for Beckett. Um athletes, application setback change, um Lennox uh I think for a same thing, setback, but we also had a series of complaint letters come through.
Oh.
Um this is basically how it goes. Um hereby, undersigned residents, taxpayers and voter respectfully ask that you and your board, if appropriate, look into the following conditions that are causing concern in our neighborhood. We are all owners of property on Fairview Street or Fox Drive. Over the last few months, it has become increasingly more and more noticeable that large triaxle dump trucks advertised as Irish trucking and or Gary O'Brien trucking are entering and leaving Fox Drive normally full of some sort of macadam slash road fill and driving up and down Fairview Street causing loud, noxious noise as well as dust when driving up the road. It's been locally documented that some days there are forty to fifty trucks engaged in some kind of a business activity. It is our understanding that all of our properties are located in residential non-business areas, but it is our concerns that there is a business being run out of the properties on Fox Drive owned by Kristen O'Brien that is causing this dilemma. We respectfully ask that this be looked into by respective boards, offices That this be looked into by respective boards, offices. Um, to our question, we would like to at least hear back from someone in a timely matter. Have multiple letters and. Signatures.
I can, I can tell you what it is. If we don't already know.
I don't.
I don't.
He hauled a lot of material from, uh, Lennox's new municipal building. After they crushed it. Uh, they added access. They hauled it up to his property. What I heard is he plans to build up there, nothing commercial. A resident, another residential home for himself. Uh, and he's just leveling a lot off.
So it's all going in?
What's that?
Uh, everything's going in, nothing coming out?
Nothing coming out. That I know of.
Okay.
Because there's another watchdog on the street.
Um, this was sent to Matt Coleman also. It was sent to the Board of Selectmen. Our board and the conservation, so I really think we're. Uh, it's an enforcement issue, so Matt is already, I, I would say, I'll check with him tomorrow.
I'm surprised he didn't send it to the police officer.
No.
I mean, is the, is the street, uh. Designed for a heavy load like that constant?
Just a little history here. I subdivided that.
Okay.
It's twenty six acres. I split it into two lots because that's all I can get.
Mm hmm.
I had. Forty nine point five feet of. On the town, Fairview Street. Which isn't enough to get a fifty foot right away. I was in court for a year and a half. I got it. The planning board back then approved it. It, we got, um. Appealed by a couple neighbors, you know them all.
Mm hmm.
They appealed it, went to court, it was a year and a half and it. It did for my own luck, but.
Yep.
It was a woodlot. And the best I could get out of it was two lots after I put the road in. So I put a hundred and twenty five foot road. Subdivision control road paved. Where it was supposed to be and then split it up into two private drives. If you're going to, you got a water tower at the top of the hill.
Still there.
Still there. It was a right away on this lot. By the access to the town from the right of.
Wow.
And those two lots are in there. I told him to leave regularly. Twenty years ago, twenty five years ago, we haven't held a watch. He had them, he sold them all. As far as I used to do it, O'Brien bought the one on the right. And if you look up on your Google.
There's, yeah, the other one. Yep.
So I don't.
That's right near where. A little Cass Caddie's house, except you're talking about.
Exactly.
That place.
Was it Fox Run, Fox Drive?
Fox Drive, yes, okay.
Yep, so we don't, we don't need to discuss the details of who did what when, and this is an enforcement matter.
It is enforcement matter. They can look into it. If these, if stuff's going in and being filled for the lot, that's totally legit. If it's going in and out, then.
I don't know what's going to be filled.
Huh?
I used to hunt up there. I don't know what's going to be filled.
I mean, if it's going in and out. Then that's an issue.
You know my gut feeling, it's being stored.
Yeah.
He's such a.
I think so.
That's just me.
Yeah, we know. All right.
Well.
Um.
That's the correspondence.
That's it. That was it. Um, a few, I mean, we, we do get the notifications about. Alcohol permits, if anybody cares about those.
That's okay.
Okay. That was it.
Ready to adjourn about those hundred and dollars? Well, it's across from the mall, O'Briens.
Yeah.
We, we would have the, uh, the temporary structure up there. He just. Supposed to be temporarily structured. But there is no rest of the zone.
No.
No type tank.
Yeah.
Hmm, so I miss that.
It'll, I think it's going to be very temper. Till we find someplace else. Fox Drive. All right.
You have the home property on Tamrec Street. I'm hearing the town is buying that.
They've got an option on it, yeah.
They have an option, twenty six acres.
Yeah.
Twenty six acres.
Yep.
And what are they going to do with it? That's wet.
That's right, and they know that. Uh, they just want to, they may put another ball field on it.
You know the ball field?
Well, that's what I said too. I would, but also the last I heard unofficial. Was, uh, LA is looking for a piece of property. They may come off of the cul-de-sac. Uh, on Hartwood. And there's, because there's a build, supposed to be a build of a lot in there.
Well, there would be.
Oh, yeah.
You can get a couple of little blocks in there.
Yeah.
With a common.
You really could, yeah.
Yeah.
It could happen.
Eighty minutes, townhouse.
There you go.
Actually, there's, there's frontage up at Tammerack also.
Fifty feet.
More than that. Take a look.
No, no, I, I know very well, I know it well. That property, you can't get access. It's the same as probably yours. It's all wet.
It's all wet right there.
Four hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, that probably is all wet.
It's all, the only access you have is, uh.
Next to Tony's.
Next to Tony's, the right of Tony's, fifty foot wide it goes in.
Yep.
You got a cul-de.
Gate in there.
A gate in, it's called. I'm not sure, do you have access off of the cul-de-sac?
I don't, I can't believe.
I don't think there is.
No, it's not.
I think the only access is off of.
The town would.
Hmm?
The town has, you could go in off town land and into that property.
Like if the kids want to. I don't know. Who knows?
There's the cul-de-sac. Both town land into there.
You'd have to come in from this way.
No. From, there's the cul-de-sac.
It's so it's tangential to the.
Yep, then right up there. Here's that property.
All kinds of things.
Seems like this is going to piss a lot of people off.
Well, when, last time I walked in there, off of where there's a, about coming in.
Yeah.
You better come in with a lot of dynamite.
Rock, ledge, all ledge.
Oh, really?
There's a flat spot.
Well, you can, it's a flat spot once you get through the ledge.
Well.
The driveway.
If you come off the right way next to Tony. And go to the left going towards the cul-de-sac, there's a big flat spot that goes across there. Then you got the gradient that goes up the hill. So how much? How much?
We don't know, no good.
It's a lot of.
Old Abbey Court people, you know?
Abbey Court.
Now, old Abbey Court people.
Yeah.
So if that's, if that's.
Forty seven?
I think, uh, Grant started that thing.